Board of Appeals now hearing an application by the Town of Weston Planning Board. Here, lot 378 Weston, Mass. As to 186 Meadowbrook Road, map 34, lot 55, appealing the issuance of the building permit issued December 3, 2013. So whoever is here representing the Planning Board, we'd like to hear first.
Good evening.
Hello. Mr. Rose is going to be the acting secretary.
So you said.
And I'm going to be the acting chair. Please reintroduce yourself.
Roy Chalobasch.
And I'm Steve Oppenheimer, we're both on the Planning Board. Okay, so we're here because the Planning Board basically wants reassurance that the construction depicted in the documents can be executed in a manner consistent with those documents, specifically with the intent of demolition required. We've asked for a specific set of documents, we haven't gotten them. Even though we did finally receive stamped documents by the structural engineer, they're still not responsive to what we asked for. We need to know that this construction is feasible, that this house, this renovation is feasible to build without significant modification in the field. We have a lot of questions based on the information presented. We don't believe it's feasible to build the way it's currently drawn.
Why?
Well, uh-
Well, it's very complicated and we can give you some examples on the drawings.
Okay.
We'll put there if you want to see the specifics. If we got the drawings we asked for, they would go a long way to alleviating our doubts. And in fact, we're really hoping that things go according to plan because we don't want to be caught in a bind down the road where the applicant has to come back to the Planning Board because they've demolished too much. So I believe that you have copies of the letters we've sent to you previously showing the documents that were requested. So I'll specifically address why we feel we haven't gotten the documents we asked for.
Can I ask a more basic question?
Sure.
Why is the Planning Board entitled to ask the applicants for certain documents?
Well, I don't know if it's a question of entitlement or not, but in order to alleviate our concerns that the construction will proceed according to the drawings provided, we need additional information that we haven't been given. And in our opinion, in order to provide that additional information, the best way to do that would be via the specific documents that we asked for.
And I think what Mr. Rose is asking is what is your standing? They're not before the Planning Board.
Can you address?
That's, that's exactly what I'm asking. Madam Chair, members, I'm Joe Bard, as you know from Copeland Page and I know the Board. I want to make sure the Board is comfortable, the zoning Board is comfortable with me addressing some of these questions, which I'd be happy to do, but I just want to be sure that they're comfortable.
I'd love to have you address the question. I guess my question is, who do you, who do you represent?
Well, that's a fair question. So of course, we represent the town and the Planning Board has gotten involved in this going back several months, so at this point, to the extent that I'm representing one board or another, it is the Planning Board.
It's just a little awkward because-
Yes.
-we're both town instrumentalities and you're-
As is the building inspector.
Your town council, as is the building inspector.
Right, right.
It's just, I just want to be clear, but I'd love to hear from you if you would.
So to answer that question, the, um, the Planning Board's foot in the door, if you will, or I guess the standing is that the Planning Board would have, will have jurisdiction over this project if the project involves sufficient amount of demolition that it becomes, as defined under the zoning bylaw, substantial demolition.
So possibly in the future, they'll have jurisdiction, but right now, they do not.
Well, that's the question, is do they or don't they? And the problem is, and the question the Planning Board keeps putting, and it's really in a sense one of the questions before you, is has that threshold been crossed? And the problem is that even though there's a certification, and I saw the building commissioner's letter again today, he's satisfied with the calculations as he determined them, and I saw the certification from the structural engineer in the last week or 10 days or so. But those are all based on, I think, assumptions that someone has to make to ratify the numbers that have been provided. There are two architects on the Planning Board and what they've asked for is, are structural drawings that show the actual structure as it exists and then showing what will be demolished. There are no drawings provided yet that show that, and they're hidden behind walls today, if you will, and will be in the future. So you can't actually, there isn't a source document that allows somebody with the skills necessary to look at these documents and do their own math. The architect has provided columns of numbers and then, which are detailed, I'm not diminishing the numbers that were provided, but there's not an ability to then, if you've got the requisite skills, which I don't, but other architects do, there's not the ability to look at those plans and verify those numbers. And so the, the four documents that have been requested, that are in the letter from the Planning Board, that's from the Planning Board, from Joe Lee, that listed four documents that the Planning Board had requested in a meeting with Attorney White back in mid-December or so, would be the plans that would allow the Planning Board to simply see behind the walls, if you will, and allow them to do, to do the verification, to do their own math, to see what's being demolished.
So I'm confused, does every person in this town that decides to do renovations to their home, and maybe John can speak to this, provide these sorts of plans to John before he makes a determination whether or not a building permit can issue?
I would know that. I can answer that question. The answer is no, and they're not required to necessarily by the building code, but the difference in this case is that this is a particularly complicated project, and in particular, rather than it being a clean-cut addition, like many and most additions are where they're an appendage to an existing house, this particular addition is enveloping most of the house. So some of the new walls are outside of the existing walls and surrounding it, some of them are in line with the existing walls, but they're being raised and a new roof is being put over the existing roof. So it's a much more complicated situation, and then you add to the fact that depending on how much is demolished, in this particular case, and they're very close, if it becomes substantial demolition, then it has to go back to the planning.
Let me ask a question. I'm trying to understand what you just said, in terms of these structural plans, because I'm not an engineer or an architect. Are you saying that without the structural plans, you might, the architect might provide for, here's an existing, an existing wall, looks like this, and the plan calls for knocking this over and this stays up, but without the structural diagrams that you're looking for, this might fall down? Is that what you're saying? Do you want to know how it's going to stay up with this having come down?
Not really.
I think the example that you were talking about might be helpful.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, it really has to do with the extent of demolition. If you look at this particular house, and I can go back and address the specific drawings that we asked for and why we don't think we've gotten them. First of all, it's very unusual for a house built in the 40s to be balloon-framed, which this house supposedly is, which is a 19th century method of construction where the studs continue from the first floor level all the way up to the second floor roof. And that's the assumption being made on this house.
Why is that an assumption? Either it is or it isn't.
Yeah.
Right, well, because we can only go by the drawings, we can't see-
You can block there.
Until the demolition is done, you can't see it. So it's, they're also removing the existing second floor, and then there's-
Can I stop you for one second? I'm stuck still on how you are even here. I'm really troubled by that.
Should we read the appeal or?
No, I don't, in a nutshell, I think Steve described it, and maybe I'll say it in different words and hopefully we'll be clearer about it. I mean, what, what, this particular project is extraordinarily complex. It's not a traditional addition in the way that you'd imagine addition, where you'd know what the existing house was and what the addition was. It involves enveloping elements of the house.
You're the structural engineer and knows all this?
Is that your background?
Yeah, they, they talk.
So it involves enveloping in ways that require very, very complicated phasing in construction.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, they had an architect and a structural engineer put stamps on these plans?
Yes.
Well, are you questioning their ability to-
We're not questioning it.
What we, what the architects have done is they've gone through a first pass and they've seen the complex nature of construction.
Which architects?
We're talking about the two architects on the Planning Board.
And did you put any stamps on any plans that we can look at?
No, we're only looking at-
Have you developed any calculations that we can look at?
We're only going by what was provided.
But, so even, even aside from that, okay, let's say they, they go ahead and they do it. So why are you objecting now? Why don't you object when they go over the threshold? Because the threshold that we gave them is substantially less than substantial.
I know, because-
So they have actually, you know, they could go over it, we could say naughty, naughty, you know, fix it.
Right.
Or if they go beyond the definition of substantial, you can come back and say, you guys have to put it back.
I understand what you mean about practical, you know, the practical nature of this. I mean, what we want to, what we're looking at is avoiding what we see as a potential pitfall later on.
Isn't that their risk?
It is, it is.
But it's ultimately a problem if they go over the demolition when it's, it'd be a huge problem.
Completely speculative.
Yes, it is.
I don't see your standing at all.
Yes, but based on the drawings that we have, and yes, they are, I'm sure they are totally capable of doing what we asked for, but based on the drawings we have, there is simply not enough information on those drawings. You often can't tell which walls are new, which walls are existing, I can give you lots of specifics, which I've been trying to do.
But be that as it may, you have an architect and a structural engineer that have put their stamp on these drawings, and that means something to me and to the boards that these people have taken exams to become structural engineers and architects. So I'm finding it very hard to understand how you can question two sets of professionals who put their stamps on it.
Well, I guess part of it has to do-
Maybe, maybe the only thing that everyone sitting in this room can agree on is that if they exceed the allowable limit for demolition and they have to go back to the Planning Board for site plan review, that it's going to be viewed not in the current state of the house at that point, but how it should have been if they hadn't gone forward. Al Adelot came to the second hearing before the ZBA and he said that in no one's certain way.
Absolutely.
And I think that we're still-
Let me finish for one second. And I said the same thing to the aides, and the aides said, "We agree and we understand and we know and we have talked to the professionals that we hired about the consequences of that happening."
I guess, I guess, we're just not convinced, again, based on information given to us, and Al and myself are architects and we've studied the plans, we're not convinced, based on that information, that they will be able to construct the project according to the drawings, which are incomplete, and that they will not exceed the demolition limits, and we don't want them to have to come back to the Planning Board because then it's a much, much worse situation.
Oh, okay. But that's their risk and they're willing to take that risk.
But we ultimately are going to have to deal with it.
But how do you know?
Maybe.
How do you know?
Well, we're not, we're just, we're not convinced. I guess what I, if, if you're, if you're not convinced, then at the very least, we would ask that a, either a structural engineer, peer reviewer, or a forensic architect be hired by the town to, to inspect the site weekly and to determine that the amount of demolition hasn't exceeded the allowable amount, that's what we would ask for.
Does Mr. Field go out to the site? Has, have you been?
I do.
Could you address what you've observed currently?
The portions of the building are balloon-framed.
Are or are not?
Are not, are, I'm sorry, are balloon-framed.
Okay.
All of the portions that are critical to the additions, they're balloon-framed. I've witnessed that. I have pictures of it, actually.
And so far, do you think that they can build what they want to build according to their plans, as far as you can tell?
Detroit, yes.
You've reviewed the plans yourself.
I have reviewed the plans.
Your background, sir, could you tell us, are you an engineer?
I'm a civil engineer.
And you've reviewed the demo calculations, the time that you issued the demo permit, and you've reviewed the building plans at the time that you issued the building permit?
Correct.
And you believe that they comply with the conditions set by the ZBA when the special permit issued, and that the thresholds for roof and wall demolitions are not going to be exceeded as currently envisioned?
As proposed, yes.
As proposed.
So, well, yeah, so the, it says demolition of existing roof shall not exceed 66.24% of what's there, and the demolition of existing walls shall not exceed 30%. That's pretty clear.
And you would have the town go to an additional expensive hiring?
A verifier.
A verifier. After you've already incurred-
Someone who's impartial.
I can't even imagine how much an attorney's fees by having town council advising your board to pursue this now.
Correct. I think it's a very important thing to determine exactly what is being demolished, and it's an extraordinarily complicated thing right now.
So, and you think-
And you keep saying it's complicated, but we've got an architect and a civil engineer that have put their stamps on it. I haven't seen your stamps on any plan. And you've got Mr. Field who's saying, "I'm a civil engineer and I've reviewed these calculations." You've got two professionals- Well, Mr. Field, representing the town's interests, is going to make sure it's going to be within these limits.
Well, even Mr. Field has acknowledged that it's a complicated design.
And that's why you know, right?
But complexity doesn't confer standing.
No, but, but right now, we're only talking about design, we're not talking about the practicability of the actual construction, that's what we're concerned about.
And again, and if they should fail to be able to construct it the way that their plans say, they'll be in front of you and you can deal with it then. I really just don't see the standing. I'm stuck.
Well, I, I think any, I think any person or any instrumentality of the town has standing to appeal, but the question is, the bylaw says that you have to specifically appeal something, and if the specifically that you're appealing is, "They didn't give us plans" that you're not entitled to because you don't have any oversight of the project because they came to the ZBA after they pulled out of the Planning Board, then I don't see how you have, how you have any standing at all.
Well, I don't think the appeal is based on they're not giving us plans we asked for, it's based on the fact that we question whether or not it can be built within the demolition limits. The plans are just the means, plans we asked for are just the means of conveying the information we've asked us to reassure us that it really can be built that way.
But under what, under where, where in this bylaw does it say that they have to give you this information? They're not before you. They're not before the Planning Board, they withdrew.
In fact, I was thinking about this earlier when I saw all the correspondence that was coming across. The applicants went to three or four meetings before the Planning Board, before they withdrew from the Planning Board process. They went to three meetings with the ZBA before the special permit granted. Then the Planning Board held two meetings after the grant of the special permit, which the Planning Board didn't appeal, but the Planning Board nevertheless took it up two times. And then since then, there have been two appeals of the building inspectors' decisions.
Oh, and they also-
And at no time, at no time has the Planning Board ever come in and said, "Here are our numbers. Here's why you can't meet the thresholds."
We can't. Based on the information that we have, we can't do the calculations and we don't know how anyone else has been able to do them accurately.
It would be an incomplete calculation, this is what we're saying.
Well, that's really interesting because I happen to watch one of the Planning Board meetings where the chairman stated, and I quote, "I did the calculations." So you're saying you couldn't have done the calculations, but he said he did do the calculations, so I'm very confused.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
He said he did the calculations himself and that there was no way the aides came with underneath these percentages. I watched his attention, I watched him take his reputation on it.
In fact, what was four days extensively reviewing-
That's true.
Mr. Johnson's documents. And I have concluded, and I stake my reputation on the fact that this cannot be done. So I think, I think, why shouldn't we be able to say to the Planning Board, "If you're appealing a decision of the building inspector, you've got to show us why you have a right of appeal based on demolition numbers. Give us your numbers."
Well, I think that, I'll go ahead. If I could, again, I just want to be clear about something. What's not being challenged here, and I think to the point about the plans being stamped, so it's not an issue about whether or not the building's going to stand or not. The issue is, and by the way, your special permit has limits in it as well, and the issue is verifying those numbers. So when Al Adelot spoke about how he did some calculations, he was making some assumptions as well. I was at that meeting and he had laid on the table the drawings that he had made from extrapolations, but he explained that these were his extrapolations, I mean, because he also hadn't seen the structural drawings. So the, back to the point I was making earlier, the raw data is not available that would allow anybody to make this calculation, not about whether or not the building will stand. I mean, the structural engineer, I'm sure, didn't put his stamp on that building until he was good and sure that it was going to stand. So that's not the issue. The issue is, and it's just a Weston zoning bylaw issue, it's got nothing to do with the state building code, it's got nothing to do with structural principles, it's just the Weston zoning bylaw, and for that matter, your own limitations that you imposed in the permit as to whether or not those numbers have been exceeded. And the only way to be able to independently verify those numbers is to see those original, the structural drawings showing the original structure and showing what's coming down. And without those drawings, whoever has made calculations has made assumptions, has extrapolated, and so they're not real numbers, and so the, the-
Then why, excuse me, then why bother going through the process of extrapolating and using these numbers and working?
Okay, so wait a minute, let me, let him finish and I have a question.
So-
I have a comment.
I have a question.
So what, so referring back to what Al Adelot was speaking about several weeks ago, were his own extrapolations, his best guess, and I think if he were here, he would say the same. And so all the Planning Board has asked for, going back to the letter to Jonathan White, and you have sort of an excerpt from it, the most recent letter to you, is asking for certain drawings. So I just, I wanted to clear up, so it's not questioning- Those are structural drawings. You said structural, don't worry about it, it's a demolition. The, so they are drawings, to be clear, that show the existing structure and then what elements of the existing structure are coming down. Now, the reason that the Planning Board is interested in this-
But if that doesn't exist, how, how can the architect stamp it? And how can the engineer agree that the calculations are accurate?
Now, the engineer, the structural engineer, I assume, stamped, no structural engineer, but I assume that he stamped as to the structural integrity of the structure. The structural engineer would not-
No, no, it's not what you said.
That's not what you said.
He's right.
The gentleman is here.
So I would like to hear-
But if I-
You're done.
Well, I wanted to close the loop. And so why the Planning Board is interested in this relates in part, and I'm looking to, I think both of you were involved, in Beaver Road. And so that was an unfortunate situation where the whole herd got out of the barn and then it turned out that more had been done by way of exceeding the threshold that then people were aware of, then had been permitted by the building inspector or whatever it was, and it was an incremental sort of thing. And so then everybody was playing catch-up and, you know, we were in a court and then something went on for years. So I mean, the, the Planning Board's interest here, again, is to have a level of confidence over the number. And that was the last point that Mr. Oppenheimer was making about if you're not going along with this appeal, to at least put some mechanism in place for weekly verification, to at least be able, as the project proceeds, to verify the actual-
Isn't that what the building inspector does?
He said he was going to review it weekly, at least.
Well, I don't know if he's going to verify those calculations, maybe it's a discussion to have, but-
I wouldn't have.
Have you heard what I'm saying?
Yes. Are you done for, for the moment?
Yes, I am.
I don't have much to say, but I would, I would bring up one point. And I don't argue that, just like any resident of Weston, the Planning Board has standing. But just because they're a town board, and they're a good town board, doesn't mean they have any more standing than a neighbor who come before you tonight. And if a neighbor came before you tonight and said, "We'd like you to deny this special, this building permit because we have some concerns that it might not comply with, may not be kept under either your standards in the decision or from their perspective, the substantial demolition, we have some concerns that it might not." And that was the extent of it. I think you would just rather matter-of-factly say, "We understand your concerns, the building inspector is going to monitor this project, he knows it's a close call," but that would be the end of it. And I'm just, I've suggested to the Board of Appeals tonight that the Planning Board's concerns are well noted, but they really have no more standing than a neighbor, and to come with you with concerns after the building inspector has gone over those plans, as far as I understand, ad nauseam, more than once, after the, same with the architect. And we have the structural engineer who did two things. He, he went and looked to see that structurally, that this skin of the building that was being retained was going to be supported. That was number one, and provided, he provided some additional detail. But he also looked at the calculations on demolition to see that he agreed with what was being done. And beyond that, he can speak for himself, but I'm saying, treating the Planning Board the same as a neighbor, I'd say it's the end. Just because they're concerned, there's no reason to overturn the building permit issued by a very competent building inspector doing his job. And if you'd like, either the architect or the structural engineer-
I don't think it's necessary.
Sure, I'd like to know from the engineer, what the engineer did and what the purpose of the engagement was and what your conclusions were.
Sure.
And you identify yourselves with-
Yeah, my name is Alan Dittkevich, structural engineer.
How many years?
How many years? Since 1970. Since 1970, I've been in the construction industry for over 53 years. I'm a principal in the firm of Abbot Jona Engineering in Winchester, Massachusetts. Most of our involvement is with medium-sized buildings, but we do a lot of large residential structures, probably done over 3,000 in the last 50 years, you know. We've done similar, you know, similar renovations to what you have here. I mean, it's nothing, for me, it's nothing strange. I mean, I, you know, I came in, I looked, oh, I had the contract about the drawings, and he said, "We need a stamp in these drawings." And I looked at it and I said, "What for?" And he said, "Well, they think the building's going to fall down." So I looked at it right away and I said, "Well, it won't fall down, you're going to take good care when you take this thing apart, you know, you're going to brace it, you're going to use hand saws, chainsaws, you're not going to use a bulldozer, you're not going to use a big shovel to just pull everything out of this house, because then, yeah, the walls would fall down." The other thing I looked at, I looked at all the integration of the new structure with the old structure, and I've got calc, and I've done this many calculations on this house, you know, including all the necessary connections and attachments that have to keep this house stable for whatever it has to undergo, you know, like gravity loads wing or anything else that's going to be subjected to. Now, what I'm doing too, is I'm not making up my own plans, what I've done is I've taken David Johnson's plans, I've taken electronic file of his plans, annotating any, you know, changes- annotating any, you know, changes we think ought to be made and connections. So that when these plans are finally done with all the connections, then I'll put my final stamp on them. And I will be out in the field to make sure that all that work is done right and properly. I can even go out there during the demolition phase to make sure the building is braced properly.
Did you review the demolition of the roof and walls?
Yes, I did.
You did?
My contractor brought those drawings into my office with the elevations, with all the shaded areas that are coming out. I went through all the numbers and I agreed with him that his calculations are accurate. You know, that's based on these elevations and planes, that's, that's what it was. So, the sentences they put up.
These are the existing drawings for the house, full exterior.
For purposes of demolition.
All four elevations.
Yeah.
Marked out what's stained, shaded what's being removed, windows and doors that are coming out, windows and doors that are existing that are stained, plus all the square footages for each individual piece from left to right, top to bottom. And this is the drawing that those things doesn't exist.
Who's, who's...
We never said that to him.
Who's, who's, you said there are no figures, but anyway. Who's handwriting exists on, on the plan?
Ours is the computer generation that has the computer numbers. We passed this, for the permit for John Field, and this is John Field's, one of his sheets of going through, looking at the numbers.
So, what is it that the planning board lacks? In a perfect world, if you could order the applicants to produce for you what it is that you're looking for, what, what is it?
Well, it's the four items that we requested. And by the way, the structural engineer did say, it sounds like he's working on something that we've asked for and we haven't seen it. He's actually working on revising the, the structural drawings that were prepared by the architect and adding information to it because right now, there's lots of missing gaps. So, I assume when he's finished doing that, it will probably address some of our questions, not all of them. But what we've asked for are demolition framing drawings, of which there are none. And that would include existing floor plans and elevations with the portions to be demolished clearly indicated. Those do not exist.
And that doesn't qualify?
No, that is not a demolition framing drawing. No, those are just elevations showing rectangles of...
Cutouts.
Yeah, cutouts of...
So, what did Al Adalot do with his calculations on? What, what does he have?
Okay, so that's number one.
So, that's number one. Number two?
Should they just follow along with your letter?
Sure.
Which letter is this, please?
It's dated.
November thirteenth, but it's also in the January nine letter.
Oh, I see, these are the four.
Yeah.
So, the second thing we asked for, the new construction framing drawings, including proposed floor plans and elevations, what we've gotten are...
Can I, can I point these out as we go through?
Yeah.
We have a whole pack of it, I think.
So, all right, go talk about demolition framing drawings, including existing floor plans and elevations, the portions to be demolished clearly indicated, so where is that?
He's going to...
Wait a minute, he's going to tell us...
Yeah, while he's getting it, I'll point out, picture them as neighbors when they're...
Well, no, I understand that. We're already, we still haven't decided whether they can ask for this, but let's just see what you have.
These are the existing floor plans of the house as it currently stands. Everything that's shaded are walls to be removed and everything that's dotted are windows and doors, existing windows and doors to be removed.
Those aren't framed. He's walking, he's walking through it.
Please. Second floor, same thing. Here's the existing roof as it currently stands, showing the shaded area of roof to be removed and a white roof to remain, plus the square footages of each.
And the plans for each structure.
And, and did you read, these are the plans you reviewed?
Yes, I did, yeah.
These are the elevations, the four elevations of the house. Again, shaded what's removed, what's to stay, the square footage of what's stained, the square footage of what's being removed, percentages and the tallies that correspond to what the ZBA decision was.
Yeah.
From that, and this was also submitted back in November and has been on public record for the last month and a half, two months. Showing the remainder of the architecture set. These are the demolition plans I just showed you. This is the existing foundation that's here. This shows new foundation that hasn't been demolished.
You have to clear up.
These are all the framing plans, the new floor framing plans, showing what's being kept and what's new, all corresponding to what the demolition plans are. First floor framing plans, second floor framing plans, attic floor framing plans and new roof framing plans, again, showing areas that are being maintained.
Now, a question, I'm going to interrupt, Al. What changes, they talked about, you're in the process of making changes to this?
It's not...
No, I want...
Not a change.
Yeah, exactly. I want a different way, I want you to do it.
I mean, I run calculations on every stick in the house, so to speak, okay? And what I've done is like in the roof, I've got a whole sheet with connection details for all ridges and stuff and could figure ceiling, things like that. We've mortified some beam size.
Nothing's changed on the other...
Hold on, hold on.
I mean, we've looked at all the beam sizes and everything else to make sure that everything, you know, structurally compatible, what should be, and put some coat, you know? I mean, I've put all the snow loads on the roof that are required and everything else. And this roof right now, we've already got this annotated, got some changes, you know, that's been done. The thing is, fortunately, all the plans would have been done tonight, but we had a little problem with our electronic files because he was giving me electronic files that I couldn't, couldn't handle.
But are, are you changing the outer skin that's...
No, that's one point I want to make. I mean, using his plan exactly the way I am, I'm not adding anything to the perimeter or adding anything to the height, there's nothing. Everything is within the envelope of the building. I'm using his plan, I'm not...
Yeah, so when you say you're changing something or adding...
Annotating.
What's that mean?
Well, it may mean like a ridge beam or something like that, but, you know, I might add. The size where it misses, you know? I mean, there's, there's, like, some of these things are missing when we're mutating all the sizes that are not called out even though it looks like they are in some places, right? And over the garage, you know, we, you don't see the bearing walls underneath or on the end for all the bearing walls underneath, so we can see where all the bearing wall there on the roof.
So, you're adding, you're adding additional detail.
Detail.
Exactly.
Is there, is, isn't that what you're usually doing on a job like...
Right, yeah, I mean, we're trying to clarify. I don't want the contractor to go in and say, "Hey, there's no bearing walls here. I don't want to go through a place and run the walls." I don't know, I, I mean, it's really, it's a protection thing for the owners too because we want every little detail on the drawing to, you know, Mr. Contractor comes back and just change orders, you know, something they can look to see. So, whenever I do plans, every, every little nut and bolt is there because I don't want to hear anything about it. And I'm in the field, like, every time a section of framing is finished, it just, I mean, I can go out there and inspect all the bracing for these walls too, you know? I mean, it's something we do all the time.
You can say your...
These are all the structure necessary. These are sections that are taking cuts through the project to eliminate for the contractor the heights, how roof lines are framed, how pieces are put together, section by section throughout the entire house, from one end of the house to the other. Structural sections, these are the new floor plans. Again, enumerating dotted outline shows the existing house all through here. Everything in black is new framing. Everything in white are walls that are remaining. Again, this is taken directly from what was done on the demolition, the prison, this demolition. Second floor, same thing. Down the line perimeter of what's existing, but everything outside of that is new. Walls that are stained are, are left in white. So, this is the new roof. These are the elevations that were presented as part of our, our package to something that we gave before you. As far as the new exterior elevations, what the house is going to look like, the pace. This is our schedule of all the sizes of the doors going in and the sizes of the windows. And these are just markings of the bathrooms, overhang details of the socket. And then, we did a drawing that's in deference to the planning board of overlaying our work of what the existing elevations are, overlaying to what the new elevations are.
The, the darker cars are, is that the new?
Yeah, you can, the light color here is, is all the new. This is, this is the outline of the existing.
So, that's something you wouldn't ordinarily do?
It's, it's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant to the calculations?
It's irrelevant to what's required for a set of drawings to build it. We've marked on the plan the walls to stay and how high those walls are. We've marked how those walls stay and how we supplement them with new construction. We've marked how we keep the plywood on the exterior of the house where there's no demolition in the areas that we say there's no demolition. And all those heights are marked out. And actually, working with Atlas Contract, we did the exact same thing on Newton Street. It was the same construction process, same fussiness of keeping old framing, marrying up with new framing, keeping old plywood on the exterior and maintaining exactly the demolition that we had talked about. So, it's been done.
So, that's, is that the complete package that you submitted to Mr. Field?
Yes.
He goes back and...
Yes.
Demolition, all right. So, of these four, did you see any, any of the things you requested of these four?
Bits and pieces. Do you want me to go through them?
Sure.
Okay, so, again, there are no demolition framing drawings. Then we asked for new construction framing drawings. They did submit floor plans, but not elevations of the new construction framing. And also, the framing plans, the floor plans should show the vertical structural members, but they don't and it sounds like that's what the engineer is planning to add. But that's what you would expect to see. And it's probably because of these structural...
Your attorney said structurally, don't worry about it, it's demolition. Now, you're going back to the structural.
Can you let him finish, please? I'm sorry.
And it's probably just because the structural drawings were repaired by an architect and now a structural engineer is going back and, and adding the necessary information. But in any case, there are no new construction framing elevations, just plans. The third item, building sections, there are building sections, as he's shown you, but they're very confusing. They don't differentiate between the existing and the new framing, which is what we asked for.
You did.
You can't really tell in most cases which walls are new and which are existing. And then the last thing, at least two framing details showing to what conditions were existing framing and new framing, or either co-plain or intersect. Framing details were not provided. The only ones that we got, I believe it was on Friday, were some from the structural engineer and we looked at those, but those are boilerplate, general details that do not address, first of all, they're not referenced in the plan, but they do not address the specific conditions for this specific project, which again, is how do you mesh old balloon framing with new framing? That's not addressed in any of the details. And the wall sections that they did provide aren't detailed enough to show us these kind of details that we're looking for. They don't show connections. And again, the ones provided by the structural engineer are too generic. So, from our point of view, so many information's been provided, but certainly, there's information missing in every single category that we asked for.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yeah, is there anybody else who wants to speak?
One thing I would add is, they've submitted sufficient plans to the building inspector. Done, does this all the time, both in Weston and in previous jobs, to satisfy him. At the request of the planning board, they spent thousands of extra dollars, and I'm saying thousands, hundreds of thousands. No, with, with, with the structural engineer, I think they didn't have to do, try to satisfy the planning board. You know, yes, they, structural engineer, as far as I understand it, always fleshes out the framing and everything else more details so there's no mistakes in the field. They've done that. Now, what I'm hearing is this neighbor saying, "We want them to spend thousands of dollars more to satisfy us." May have satisfied the, the building inspector, may have satisfied the, I'd call it a peer review with the structural engineer. "We want them to spend thousands of dollars more." I just think it's inappropriate, unnecessary, and they're willing to take the risk and they're confident that they're not going to have a problem staying with those figures.
The structural engineer wants to say something else?
I just wanted to show the gentleman these drawings because to show, even though, you know, we had boilerplate more than we stand, like I said, we have a little glitch in, you know, without demolition, see? This title block is my...
They don't understand it. You're wasting...
I mean, this is my title block, it's not going anywhere to the structural ground, okay? Because anytime I take over a house like this, the building board specifically says, "I have to supervise preparation of the plan, I have to supervise..." I told, you know, the owner and everybody else, I said, "Well, I didn't do that unless I'm going through the whole thing, okay? I'm going to annotate your drawings and I think you're the only one to make a complete set so that ain't going to be safe and, you know." But, I mean, for example, this, you know, these are developments of all the roof, these are going to be all the roof connections, okay? We'll have steel plates up here and bolts and everything, so that ain't going to be safe, okay? This is the foundation, I mean, these marks here are all like red marks, they're annotated. But we will be putting sections through the wall whenever we need to re-bond it and take care of that. It's not a special stuff here.
But can I just say, this is going beyond the question of whether or not they're exceeding the percentage of demolition.
Yeah, well, I think he should just finish and then you...
I'm just trying to make a point with them. I'm trying, I'm trying to answer their response.
He's defending a statement that says it's boilerplate.
Like, you know, I've checked all these sizes. There will be sections through these areas. I know you're looking at little quarter inch sections, but, you know, this, you know, I told you, I said, "Here, the linear, you know, roll things up." You can see all my annotations on the upper post.
Right, right.
And the head is and everything else, those will have sections through that, connections. And there's all the attic framing annotations.
Is that boilerplate?
No, but they haven't seen this. This is the very first time we're seeing it, wasn't seen this before.
I apologize, it shouldn't have been here, but we had a little problem with, you know, he was using vector words, I'm using auto CAD and we got this...
Right, right, right.
You know, stuff like that. Now, the roof framing plan is pretty well complete, I've done most of this, but we will have all of these connections, walls. We put all the bearing walls on the wall. Like I said, I don't know what the bearing, all that, you know? And well, also, I was, I was going to come up with a scheme of, of shading existing walls, you know, on the plan. Well, these structural frames are shading and then, because we're reinforcing all the two-by-sixes, okay? So, you know, the contractor never finds the same wall, so...
Are these two-by-sixes continuous twenty-foot balloon frames? Are you doing platform frame?
No, no, this is going to be, it's going to be full platform framing.
Okay, because there's sections that don't show it that way, right? Rimjoist.
I told them, I have rimjoists.
Okay, so that means...
Very generic.
So, you can see there's a lot of information that's starting to get...
Are you saying your concern is structural or some percentage demolition?
What do I think he's saying?
Because in order to see, to understand how this building is going together, like, as, as I started to tell you, but I've been interrupted a few times, they're removing an existing second floor. Then they're inserting a new second floor at a higher level than the old second floor. And then they're putting in a new roof being built at a higher level than the existing roof. And then, much of these new loads are being supported by existing walls and foundations. And then you have interior walls being removed and they're leaving unrestrained two-story walls, kind of temporarily hanging out there, that don't have floors. And there's a logical sequence of construction. And for us to, to kind of put all the pieces together and to figure out what can stay and what can go, we need all this information. You have to understand that...
It's not your job.
You have to understand that if, if we weren't concerned about how much demolition there was going to be, it wouldn't be an issue. We're not saying that this can be built. We know it can be built. The question is, can it be built without demolishing more than they say they're going to demolish? We don't think it can. And they have... We don't think it can, and they have yet to prove otherwise.
But they're saying we have, it can, but you've given us no, nothing, you haven't said here's any words.
Because we can't prove it until we have information...
First of all...
But the one thing you do have is a structural engineer who says, yes, it can.
So if he finishes his annotations, which he wasn't able to do, will that pretty much complete what you've asked them to give you?
I think it will, I mean, as long as it addresses these four items, which we can hope it does, I mean, it looks like he's gone a long way towards doing that.
It has never been enough. Wait a minute, can you... So you, you think that it will go a long way towards meeting...
Yes. He's answering the several questions, yes.
And we thought it might also be helpful to have the, to talk to the structural engineer and the architect on the site, because they could explain some things right there, and they could show us exactly how they, how they intend to construct.
I'm trying to understand what obligation they have to do any of this on site. I mean, to, to ask the aides to have the planning board members come whenever they want and ask their engineers to point out what they're doing, I mean, it's onerous, this whole process is onerous. I'm ready to vote. So, is there some reason why you ask, you tell me, usually, if you're trying to figure out how much is being demolished, somebody shows up as work is in progress and makes sure that enough is still standing? And that would typically be the building inspector?
Yeah, I can't speak with him, but, for him, but that's my understanding of this.
And it's your intention to go there during critical phases?
During those stages. Correct. And also to require an affidavit when the frame is complete, that certifies that the conditions set by the zoning board of appeals have been achieved.
So do you have a problem with that process?
I'm not sure I understand what you just said. I think what I heard was, the responsibility is the architect's, that was affidavit, I'm understanding, to be in compliance with demolition.
No, I think the building inspector's going to go and look.
I heard that, but I also heard the affidavit, I heard, all right, understood.
Yeah, and then the, I don't know if it's architect or the structural engineer, but one of them will...
It's the same equivalent to an as-built on a foundation, where the surveyor or engineer has to certify, using his license, that the foundation was put exactly where it was supposed to be. Same thing here.
But one of the things that they're certifying will be that they didn't go over sixty-six point two-four percent, and that they didn't go over thirty percent, right? That's part of what they'll be recertifying at the end of the day, am I right?
That's correct, that's the condition of the building permit.
But meanwhile, he's there visually making sure that what they said was going to remain is still there.
Because we would prefer an impartial certification.
And in the town, the town's building inspector is somehow partial? They're, they're not, he's not impartial? I, I'm really troubled by that.
I'm just telling you what I'm...
But you just said you wanted somebody impartial to do that.
It's not, I want to hear what you said.
Correct, yes.
I want to hear what you said.
Exactly.
What was your answer to that?
I said that we would like someone impartial to review, to certify the amount of demolition. You or the planning board?
It's not the building inspector who's certifying. Well, but the building inspector isn't impartial?
It's not the building, the building inspector does his own thing.
He's doing his own thing.
Right, and then he gets one of the...
Premiershiped professionals.
To certify.
Can I talk about fifteen points where the planning board was impartial? Can I go over them?
No, not at all. I go back to my original comment, which is, I don't know why they're here, it's all speculative. They've shown us nothing to demonstrate why this building permit was issued in error. I think they have the burner proof in it, they haven't given us anything.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I share Connie's view, and I just pointed out that under Section nine A four, that any, either person, neighbor, as Jonathan put it, or the planning board, has got to specify the reasons for their appeal. The lack of information that you would like but don't have, when you're not really part of the process, can't form the foundation of that appeal. So what you're left with is a challenge to the building inspector's determination that they should be issued the building permit because they have demonstrated that their plans are going to allow them to meet what the ZBA mandated when the special permit granted. And absent some foundational calculations that show that he's wrong, I don't think you've even met the most basic standard for coming here today to say that something has been done in error. And I think if you came in, you said, you know, here, here's a calculation, here's why the building inspector is wrong, the amount of demolition is, you know, seventy-one percent, and here's why, that that would form the foundation of appeal, from which the ZBA would be able to review the decision of the building inspector. But I, I don't see that the planning board, you know, are crediting with all, with all good intentions, and I'm sure you don't want to see the days back before the planning board, because that would obviously DMS, as I said, I think that's the one thing we all can, can agree on.
Right.
But I, I don't think you've met the most basic standard for appeal, because I don't think you have any basis for challenging the building inspector's decision that you've put in front of us here tonight.
I don't disagree with you, except that the reason we can't do the calculations is that we haven't had the information that we've required.
But with all, but with all due respect, the, the planning board reviewed, over the course of four meetings, the aide's proposal for what was substantial demolition and a new home being built, and that process fell apart for whatever reason, so they abandoned that process, abandoned those plans, and came to the ZBA. And the ZBA's standard at that hearing was to make a determination about whether or not this addition, whatever you want to call it, was not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. That's what we determined. And the planning board did not appeal that fundamental decision. What they decided to do was to piecemeal, take on demo permit, and then take on the building permit, but I think without the sufficient factual foundation for challenging the grant of those two, two permits.
We're not against the concept of an addition. I mean, the idea was, the new construction was impractical, and an addition was probably the best way forward. The difference here is, if you look at those plans, it's very hard to say that that's actually an addition to a house.
Right, but that's a, that's a public policy determination, which is, which was, which was codified in the bylaws, maybe in error, but nevertheless, is in the bylaws. So maybe we do have a situation where you can swallow an existing structure without going over the seventy, thirty limits. That's a public policy issue that Al Aedalat went to town meeting, and in his view, cured on December second. So, you know, we're, we're, we're past that. This relates to the, to one eighty-six Meadowbrook wrote, only that house, with respect to this set of standards, which now, you know, may be gone, it may be different, you might not be able to do this. But I think with respect to this house, if you want to appeal, you've got to come forward with sufficient evidence that forms the foundation for challenging the determination. And then there's nothing that you've put before us that we can use to make that determination.
Such as Al's off the cuff numbers? I mean, you, you have no numbers, you have, so... And, and you're right, that this project is under the old rules.
Right.
It's not the new.
Understood.
And, and it may be a totally, it may be a totally fair point, that, that this was not the way it should have been drafted, that it failed to capture a situation that, as a matter of public policy, was not something we should have wanted, but that, but that's neither here nor there with respect to the Vane's house, because these were the rules as they existed at the time they applied for the special permit. And the planning board didn't challenge the application of the Gale decision to the aide's project. You didn't, you know, you, you didn't challenge the grant of the special permit. Now you're challenging determinations made by the building inspector, and I think doing it without the background that's necessary to articulate on the field.
Well, and also, you can't apply the new rules to the old.
No.
No, they're not trying to, but they're, they're not trying to do that.
All we have is reasonable cause for concern.
And I just don't think that's, and that's the key point, because that's not, because that's not the foundation of an appeal.
The difference, though, is that we've got two architects that have looked at it and said, we don't have enough data to say absolutely. All we asked for was enough data to provide that, and we're getting there.
But the architects could, I mean, you could say, here's what we think is actually happening, but you haven't. All you've done is said, out, give us more info. You could, you could have said, this is what we think you're doing.
I'm ready to go.
Me too. Half an hour ago. I was like, denies us the, the issue to the building permit.
So do I.
So do I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for, for trying to keep them out of trouble.
Nice to meet you.
So much so much.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Congratulations, those are the artifacts. He was always right.
Last time the builder, he was serious, that you have me a key to the office, and said, yeah, he's got, like, a critical doubt, and people are like, show it to me.
Like, I don't have to move on my house back...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
No, thanks very much.
This is our...
No, you're watching me. Unfortunately, I'm a client, and I'm very educated.